All right. We're with our pledge allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic, where it stands, a nation under God, indivisible, with dignity and justice for all.
Well, welcome, everyone. Happy holidays if you're watching us on the camera, on the video. We have an abbreviated meeting tonight due to my illness, and so if you are watching, it's going to be a short one.
It's like a holiday special.
Yeah, the holiday special. And also, Mr. Greidos is not with us again this evening. He has a work matter, so we're four board members, as you can count. All right, so we will begin with an acceptance of our agenda, and before we do that, we have to make a couple of modifications. We are going to table the instructional design discussion tonight, so that's 5.1, and so that's literally just removing that from the agenda. And then we are adding a resolution as 10.8, and I think I should read the resolution now before, or do we read it when we get to the ... Read it now. Okay? So the resolution that we're adding, 10.8, this is a resolution authorizing the stipulation of a settlement resolved. The Board of Education of Irvington Union Free School District hereby approves and ratifies stipulation of settlement and all terms therein in the action pending before the Supreme Court, Westchester County, under index number 05-11913, and hereby authorizes the President of the Board to execute same. And be it further resolved that the district superintendent or his designee is hereby authorized and directed to take all action consistent with the terms set forth in the aforementioned stipulation of settlement. So obviously, if you're watching from home, this is a matter of legal matter that the district has settled, and that's what the Board will be agreeing to in the consent agenda. All right, so having entered those two additional, or made those modifications, can I have a motion to accept tonight's agenda with those modifications?
So moved.
You meant accept the consent agenda.
All right, well, no, we're making, we're not ...
Oh, we have ...
Yeah. This is, I'm just changing the, you're accepting tonight's agenda, remember the ...
No, I got it, I got it.
Yeah, yeah.
I realize my mistake.
It's all right.
Welcome to go.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So I think with that, we turn it over to Dr. Harrison and the superintendent's report for tonight.
Good evening. To begin, I'd like to follow up on something that I spoke of at our meeting 13 days ago, when I referenced an SED report entitled, "Where Are They Now?", which was a data release that SED looked to track what was referred to as a 2008 cohort, so essentially the class of 2012, to see how many of those children were actively enrolled in college. As I reported, there are great concern among our local school districts about inaccuracies in that data. In that report, it was identified that we had approximately 80 percent of our students still pursuing their studies in college, and we say pursuing studies, that includes four-year institutions and two-year institutions. So much like our neighbors throughout the lower Hudson Valley, we began our own investigation, and in doing so, we identified 25 children that were not included in the state's dataset. From those 25, we had information from many of those families that the children were enrolled in school. In a couple cases, we did find students that were not engaged in college but were in the workforce. We had one student who is now a professional ballerina and did not complete college studies. But we also found a couple of students that did not anticipate going to college when they were graduating, but now are enrolled in college. We struggled to get in touch with everybody because a few of the families had moved, and we've been reaching out to some friends and neighbors trying to get some contacts and have been unsuccessful on a few. But like many of our neighbors of similar demographics, we did find that there are significant inconsistencies. We now estimate our continuation rate, shall we say, to be in the neighborhood of 97 percent as opposed to the 80 percent. We, certainly there's a few families that we had hoped to hear from that would be able to truly verify that figure, but right now, based upon in-house data and records and parental contacts, or in some cases, student contacts, we're able to verify that we're in a much better position than the state of New York had reported in that original report. I also wanted to touch base with respect to pedestrian safety initiative. Beginning today, the Irvington Police Department is going to begin to visit PE and health classes throughout each of our schools to provide workshops on pedestrian safety. We start off each school year with some general reminders, and for that come from school administration in each of the schools. This is then followed up at Dow's Lane by our police department facilitating some workshops for our children around Halloween time. But we really felt it was necessary to continue this dialogue, and we're fortunate to have our youth officers that can be visiting our schools as a part of the PE program and are going to provide some instruction and some resources for our children to make sure they're safe while they are walking to and from school and anywhere else they may travel. There's a gift card drive that's going on in the community. As some may or may not know, there are a number of folks within the Irvington School community that could use assistance all year long, but the holidays could certainly be a difficult time. The Recreation Department and our PTSA really join together and support these folks. We work in with the school district, we identify families that could be in need, and it ranges from any type of assistance, from folks that could use some assistance on a field trip cost, to people that need help putting food on the table. So as you can imagine, the holidays become a particularly difficult time. This year, we've seen some increases in numbers over some of the prior years, and we're looking at approximately 100 children and their families that are in need right now in our community. So we're trying to be able to provide some assistance. So if there's anyone that's interested in certainly donating to the cause and supporting our friends and neighbors, the PTSA is facilitating a gift card drive to any local businesses such as a Kohl's, a Target, a Dick's Sporting Goods, Walmart, things like that, that could help make these folks' holiday season a little bit brighter. We'll be accepting the gift cards in our school offices through Wednesday, and then after that, donations could be made directly to the Department of Recreation. I do want to congratulate our middle school and high school student musicians on what were two outstanding concerts over the last two weeks. Kids were really, really impressive and did a spectacular job. Performances were very well received, and the kids just continue to amaze us with their hard work. Also, I have to acknowledge the work and dedication of our music teachers who really prepared our students well for these two presentations. And then finally, we're going to be announcing in the very near future that we're going to introduce a pilot of a breakfast program on the campus that will, our cafeteria will begin to serve some breakfasts available to our students. It would also allow our students that have free and reduced lunch to be able to get a breakfast for free or at a discounted rate at the high school. We're modeling the program here, I shouldn't rather than high school, at the campus, so middle school or high school. We're modeling the program here because of the scheduling and how the school day works. It's a great opportunity for us to pilot the program. Currently, Ms. Miller is meeting with our food services manager, Dave Alberts, and both of the secondary principals to outline a plan for rolling this out, so we can begin to serve breakfast shortly after the holidays. So some communication will come in concert from the schools, food services, and the business office in the coming days. And I guess just the final, as Mr. Whitney started off the meeting, want to wish everybody a wonderful, healthy holiday season, and a reminder, the district offices will be closed from the 22nd and reopening on the 6th as our schools move. Enjoy, and thank you.
Thank you. I think with the breakfast program, since it is something that's new, it's probably a real, a good opportunity to really over-communicate.
Mm-hmm.
Just seems like people miss emails, Facebook posts.
No, we're going to make an effort. We just received verbal approval the end of last week.
Right.
So Beverly has just quickly put a meeting in place in organizing the details with, actually, three Davids at the campus, from Dave Alberts, Helen, and so tile. So we fully anticipate that there'll be a good amount of communication that'll come forward.
How does that work in terms of timing with the cafeteria? It will serve breakfast until middle school starts?
Breakfast will be served from 7:30 to 8:30 a.m.
7:30 to 8:30. Okay. So if you're a high school student, you have 20 minutes. 7:50 it starts around high school?
Yeah.
And if you're a middle school student, you can come early. Okay.
And the pilot was, it was decided to do the pilot up here because of the timing of when the school starts and it's easy to do.
The timing, right. Well, at the elementary levels, the buses pull in and the students are expected to go right to their classes, so there is no time for them to go to the cafeteria. Also, they couldn't eat in their room. So we would have to then change bell times at the elementary levels in order to provide time for them to be in a breakfast program, as well as the children who did not want breakfast then arrange for aides, et cetera, to manage that.
It's more complicated.
It's very complicated.
But we are going to modify it at some point.
We don't know yet. We're waiting to see if this is successful.
Okay.
When do, I assume most students, high school students, don't take the bus to high school, but for those who do, is there enough time to have breakfast?
Yeah, because those buses recycle and start the run for Dow's Lane, so they're here early. The ones who run the bus.
The bus picks up at my neighborhood at 6:30 in the morning.
Right, but it probably goes everywhere else.
But they have to unload by 7:30 so they can start their runs, or actually, 7:25, because they can start their runs for Dow's Lane. So they're here.
It probably reduces bus ridership further.
Right. I mean, it's ...
First period starts approximately 7:50.
7:50, yeah.
So there is that window of time there.
So they'll have time. But most don't take the bus probably because they come so early also.
But if they get a nice breakfast, maybe they can.
Maybe that'll help the traffic on high school drive, because we'll be offering breakfast, and so kids will start coming earlier, so the jocko's will happen early.
Traffic will be ...
So the traffic will be more spread out.
We're in a very optimistic mood tonight, Mrs.
Because I don't want to get sick.
All right, so we can move on to our comments from our community. Nope, no comments from the community tonight. We have tabled our instructional design discussion. We look forward to it in the future, Dr. Corr. Sorry about that. So we move to our consent agenda, and so tonight, we have items 6.1 through 7, 8, 9, and then through 10.8, which is the new addition of the resolution that I just entered into the agenda. So can I have a motion to accept the consent agenda that I just listed?
So moved.
Second. Okay, so now we will have a discussion about our items. Any questions? I think I have some points that I'm going to ask our administrative professionals to speak to. Anybody have any specific questions?
I do. I mean, you want to go in order?
Sure. John, you want to start?
My only, my only question or concern has to do with the first minutes that are on the agenda, the November 18 minutes. The discussion, well, two things, but one primarily is the discussion at the end about where I raised the issue of getting information on student, getting a list of student disciplinary actions. It did not, that discussion did not, the minutes don't have what I thought the conclusion of that discussion was, which was there was an agreement that the administration would in fact get us that information.
Well, I think it was a pilot, you know, we're going to go back and ...
Yeah, but that wasn't in, and I don't believe that was in there. I also, oh, yeah, I also felt that it probably, some more detail on the Board's reaction to the presentation on the tri-states would also be helpful. I thought it was, given the seriousness of the discussion we had, I thought that you could read that and really not get the full impact of the Board's concern about this issue.
Should we ...
It's also worth revisiting that, I think.
Do you want to move that we table 7.1?
Yes, I do.
Okay.
That's all I have.
Yeah, I had a question on, what is it, 9.4. I'm just curious as to the stipend for the drama production, is that for the whole year? Is that for one semester? Or it wasn't?
For the spring end rule.
It's only the spring?
It's the middle ...
One production a year?
Yeah.
And they do one production a year, and it had in previous ...
The middle school?
Yes.
So the fall, they do it with the high school, but then in the spring, they're still going to do a separate one?
Well, they don't know. They did it once in the fall with the spring, so there's, I think, I think this might be the confusion. There is always, have always been middle school students who are in the high school play, but the production was not really done together. It's just that we had middle school students who would be in the play if they needed students of that age. So last year, they did it as a combined effort.
Right.
But they're not doing it as a combined effort. It actually is its own play, and that's why, and this year, Luanne Ricardi is taking over. Stephen DiGiovanni used to do it, so.
Oh, okay, because it was definitely, to the kids at least, in the fall, it was positioned as a joint play.
Past fall.
This past fall.
There were a number of middle ...
For babes in arms, it was positioned to the middle school students as we're doing a joint play this year in the fall. So I actually thought when they said that, that we weren't doing a middle school play, but we are, it's just in the spring. Okay. Okay.
The middle school never had the opportunity in the fall, it was only spring only.
No, I know, but the kids were saying to me, "Oh, it's a joint play this year." I don't, I don't know where they got it. It might have been a game of telephone, but I just ...
It's good, I mean, I bet they feel that way. You know what I mean? Like, ultimately, it's not a bad thing, but in terms of our organization, it's the high school play.
Right, and prior to, two years ago, it was really if you had an older sibling at the high school and they needed someone younger, that's who they kind of unofficially reached. It wasn't like an open ...
That's what I heard too.
I don't necessarily say it's the best practice, but I think it's, you know, my understanding's based upon the production and the casting needs, that there's opportunities for middle school kids and having ...
Right, and they have tryouts.
I mean, they tried out this year, right. Two years ago, there was no tryout.
Yeah, there were middle school students this year with substantial efforts.
Yeah. And then my other thing is just for the purposes of the public meeting, we have two tax route settlements, and I was just hoping we could touch base on, I just, for me at least, I would like to kind of highlight what the net effect will be to the tax assessed base for us, as we're looking forward to the budget coming up for next year.
So I think with respect to looking at Spring Hill Suites, there's a certain reduction, but in particular to 10.2, when we look at MMC, which is the old Kraft property, which is now Montefiore, we're looking at a situation where a large percentage of the property has been declared as tax exempt, which would indicate that a percentage of this property will come off the rolls, which then obligations associated with that would be transferred to the taxpayers in the community to be able to support the school side of the taxes. Bev, do you have those figures?
On MMC, lot 6, the original assessment was 1.6 million, which I believe is coming off, it's now exempt, and lot 8 is 212,000, and they are, those portions are fully exempt.
I'm sorry, are you, was, Robyn, was your question about what the, how the assessments are going to change going forward?
No, I just, I want to know what, so as ...
Because there are no real assessments in the tax search.
No, no.
Or is it just a settlement?
No, the settlement that assesses tax base is going to be reduced.
Right, but that's not a function of the settlement, right? That's a function of separate.
Sure.
It's a separate issue.
That became tax exempt, which was ...
Well, the tax exempt one, right.
Right, and even Spring Hill, presumably, we're not, they're not making an agreement going forward about what the assessed value is.
Well, they reassess, but ...
Who are they?
No, I mean, Greenberg decides what the assessment is.
Right. But it's not a matter of litigation and ...
Once they're settled, then they are settled for, and they can't file again for a two-year or three-year lap.
Okay, so then, then does ...
Other than rebound.
Okay, so then, then it is, then, okay, so that's the context, Robyn's question.
Well, is the one coming off is going to ...
So the big one is obviously MMC coming off, because it's a nonprofit.
It's a nonprofit, and, yes, and then there's other property that they're, that they are leasing that potentially, at some point in time, could also come off the rolls.
Montefiore.
Yeah.
Right.
Kraft is leasing.
And that, you said that was 1.6 million, Bev?
There was one at 1.6, the other was 200 and some thousand.
1.8 million in total.
I'm sorry, the other ones what?
200.
And, sorry, the 1.8 million is assessed value?
Right.
So it's a large portion of our total assessed value.
It will have a significant impact on our ...
Couple of percentage points.
What is the total assessed value?
In the town? I couldn't tell you off the top of my head.
You don't analyze those numbers?
It's stuck in there somewhere.
It may not be a couple of ...
School district. I don't know.
I don't remember.
Okay.
All right, and I was, oh, I'm sorry.
No, I have no question.
Thank you, you're taking pity on me. I just thought it was important for Bev to explain the bond that we're approving tonight for the 4.6 million bond resolution.
Bond resolution?
Yep, and why we're doing it at this point in time.
Not a part of the consent.
Yeah, it's outside.
Oh, this is outside the consent?
Yes.
Thank you. And we'll ...
Want to move the bond?
So we'll, I was going to, yeah, they're both outside. So fine, then I think we can ...
4.6 million bond resolution.
They're outside the consent.
Yeah.
So we'll talk about it in a second.
Okay.
Yeah. All right, so if there are no other questions on the consent agenda, it's time for a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, and that's with the omission of the first item.
7.1 minutes.
7.1, right? So that's four, nothing. All right, so now we move on to 10.9, I guess, or whatever the new number is, which is the $4.6 million bond resolution.
This board action is necessary in order for the district to borrow the funds that the voters approve in October. Typically, school districts borrow on a bond anticipation note until all of the actual stretch have been completed, so that then you bond what is actually needed, you bond more than is actually required. And by doing it now, then we will have all of the legal requirements out of the way and in place, so that when we're, when we're ready to borrow, we'll be ready to go. If there's a significant timeframe when the interest rates would be lower, then we're ready for it. But we would not borrow until at least we had SED approval on all of our projects.
Right, so this is just a resolution that allows us to forward ...
Right, this is preliminary.
Right, yep, okay. Can I have a motion then to accept the bond resolution? Is it, what is the new number, Elaine? Is it 10.9?
10.9.
9. 10.9.
So moved.
Okay, don't worry.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And then we move to our second bond-related item, which is the refunding, the refinancing of the $27.5 million in debt, and this is good news.
Yes.
So I thought you could take a moment to explain that as well.
If you'll remember, last year, we did one refinancing. It was not as large of a refi as this one. Our fiscal advisors have stated that with this bond refinancing and the way that the interest rates have been lowered over the same time period, because we're not extending the time period over the existing maturities, we will save probably over $5 million in interest fees, which is significant. And the first time you will feel the benefit of that will be in the 15, 16 budget, when we're anticipating saving, you know, about $275,000, $280,000 in interest.
Excellent, and for those of you who are paying attention, we had this on an earlier agenda, but this particular item requires a supermajority, which we didn't have in that last meeting. We do tonight with our four board members. So I'd like to have a motion to, to accept this agenda item.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It's great news. It's not often that you have found money. All right, so we have no other community for additional comments or questions, so I'll skip over that. Then to item number 12, which is our Board of Education discussion. I actually have one item, which is our Policy Committee. Bob and John are currently on our Policy Committee right now, and Bob has indicated that he does not feel he can continue on the Policy Committee, given his work schedule, so we need to appoint somebody else, and in view of that, I was going to appoint Maria to be on the Policy Committee with John. I believe you were on the Policy Committee last year.
Yeah, but I thought it was just backup if Bob can't come.
Yeah, that was an alternate.
Yeah, it's an alternate.
Yeah, it was an alternate.
Okay, I thought it was a formal ...
Yeah, no, we're looking at an alternate. Certainly, Mr. Greidos could be there. He, I would like for him to fulfill responsibility.
Okay.
But we have a lot of work to do this year, and I, we can't postpone or delay this work, whether there's policies that now pertain to our business that's going on today, where we need to make revisions to being compliant with law, or to shift practice accordingly, but then also to lead our initiative to revise and revamp our policy manual.
Right.
We need to keep moving. So if Bob can't be there, I think Maria, having served on the committee for a couple of years, there would be value for that continuity, for her to continue in that role, since she's interested.
All right, so then Maria is just an alternate. It's that simple.
One issue that comes up, though, we can't be having three conversations among three board members on this, right?
Correct.
Emails included.
That's a good point. All right, so when Maria's serving as the alternate, it's ...
I'm just physically showing up, reviewing my documents, making my comments.
Right. But you can't, because then consult Bob.
But does that make sense? I mean, if Bob didn't, I mean, that's the first I'm hearing right, but if Bob has indicated to you that he, he feels like he can't serve, maybe it makes sense then for that reason to just swap out and put Maria on, because if you're going to be at all the meetings ...
No, I'm only going to be there if he can't.
Oh, I thought you said he'd said he can't.
No.
My, that was my interpretation of the email that he sent.
Well, we did have to cancel an earlier meeting because Bob couldn't come.
Right, and Chris doesn't want to keep postponing meetings.
So you're saying when he can't come, we will fill in for that day.
That is, yeah. It's not what I said.
I thought you, I'm sorry, I misunderstood what you said. I misunderstood.
I didn't realize that what they had worked out was this.
It's the virus talking.
The lucidity has left the room.
But a good point that you're making, I don't think I'm chiming in on anything unless Bob can't be there, then I will come to the meetings and, you know, kind of walk, talk with you.
Yeah, it wasn't my, I want to be clear too, that there's no intent to add additional voices to the work or the conversation. It was the, my motivation to keep the work moving.
Yeah. All right.
I have one more thing.
Yes, yeah, sure.
Kind of follow to the conversation that we had last week. We talked a little bit about the extracurricular clubs in the main street school, and I just had another question that I just, I kind of forgot in the, while we were talking about it, but there are a couple other clubs, and the stipends haven't showed up on anything, and I'm just wondering when we're going to see them. I believe there's some music, there's like guitar lessons, and there's another, there's two music lessons that now have become extra, after-school clubs, and I'm wondering how that works with the teachers and what they do during the day, and I'm just, and why we haven't seen the stipends on these lists.
Well, that's not a paid club. Guitar. Guitar is part of, Megan Hannon does that as part of her teaching.
Oh, so we don't pay extra, and there's another music club? I can't remember what it is.
Yeah, nature school singers.
Okay, so that also, that's what I was confused, I'm like, isn't that, we pay them to do that? Okay, so those two don't have stipends associated with them? That's part of their job.
Right, but they come out in the list, so if you get the list of clubs, those will be available.
Wait, so this is part of those particular teachers' music teaching?
Yeah.
Even though they do it after hours?
No, they don't do that after hours.
Okay.
They either do it, it's either, it could be before school, it could be, I shouldn't say they don't do it after hours, it could be before school.
say they don't do it after hours, it could be before school. You know, very often our music teachers, it's the nature of music, because of the way their lesson schedules go, their schedules are always a little bit different than a traditional schedule, and so she was able to fit it in, and so we didn't have to then count it as a club.
Okay. Makes sense.
Right, like sometimes drums, I remember it means she drums, the lesson was given before school started, but it was still part of their.
Right, but, but it wasn't, the difference this time was that wasn't listed as an after-school club.
A club.
Right, you know, the letter that went home, and guitar was listed as a club.
But it happens during lunch, during the school day.
Right, right, okay, I, yeah, okay, thanks.
All right, so our next board meeting is in the new year, January 13th of 2015 at 7:30. We look forward to seeing you then. Happy holidays.
Bye, everybody.
Strange talking to an empty room.